I'd like to call to order the Westmont Village Board meeting on March 17th, St. Patrick's Day 2016, and I'd ask Clerk Simsky for a roll call, please.
Mayor Gunther?
Here.
The clerks here, Trustee Addington?
Here.
Trustee Barker?
Here.
Trustee Barry?
Here.
Trustee Guzzo?
Here.
Trustee Little?
Here.
Trustee Nero?
Here.
Manager May?
Here.
Finance Director Parker?
Here.
Attorney Zemanek?
Here.
And I'd ask if everybody can rise and please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, and on the first thing on the agenda, and I think Chief went around, is open forum. Still have an opportunity, does anybody here would like to address the board for any item that's not on the agenda? Seeing none, open forum will be closed, we'll move on to reports. Tonight we have, it's always my pleasure and honor to recognize some of our staff, our Fire Department, and also swearing of police officers tonight, but before I do, I have to congratulate our new business, and I know probably every trustee is going to say something, but Mariano's open Tuesday morning at 6:00 a.m. with 50 people waiting to get in. We had a opening Monday night that was just fabulous. Bob Mariano greeted everybody. It's going to be a great business for this community. And I do have to congratulate Bob Mariano's team and the Bradford Realty Corporation for how professional they were the whole time. And, I failed to do this Monday night, but our staff did a tremendous job making sure that that project kept moving, and working together was unbelievable, and we want to continue that for years to come. So again, just want to congratulate Mariano's for opening their store, and they're open every day now, so please stop by. We will start off with, I'll ask Chief Weiss to come to the podium, and we have some awards to give out this evening.
Yes, we do, Mayor, thank you. I think what we want to do is start, we have two individuals that are getting recognized for 25 years of service to the village and the Fire Department, and I would like to start with those individuals because you never know when they're going to get a call they're on duty and may have to get out of here. So if Captain Light could come forward, and Lieutenant Murphy, we have two 25-year plaques. I'm sorry.
Duty Chief.
Chief Light.
Duty Chief Light, member of the village Fire Department, '91 to 2016, in recognition of 25 years of dedicated service to the community, on behalf of the mayor and the village board.
Lieutenant Murphy, a member of the village Fire Department from '91 to 2016, in recognition of 25 years of dedicated service to the community, on behalf of the mayor and the village board, congratulations.
Chief, I can only step forward a little bit. Ready? Here we go.
Thank you guys, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Okay. And then we have our yearly honor tonight, we're going to present our firefighter of the year for 2015, and to do that, I might have our chairman of our awards committee come forward and read a little bit about Lieutenant Turn and Josh, I'm sorry.
Thank you very much. Good evening, I'm Joe Kielczynski, captain of the Westmont Fire Department and chairman of the awards committee. Tonight, it's my pleasure to honor Lieutenant Paramedic Josh Turn tonight for Westmont Firefighter of the Year of 2015. Josh, if you can come up and join me. Josh began his career with the Westmont Fire Department as a candidate in January of 2004, and 10 years later, we've seen him grow into the position of lieutenant. During this time, he's displayed great organizational skills and leadership qualities. Josh has been providing and maintaining the highest level of professional emergency and safety services. Josh has been very active in the training of our paramedics and emergency responders. He brings a calm demeanor and a positive attitude to work every day. Josh is a mentor for new hires and ensures that they are receiving the best input to be successful, as well as demonstrating hands-on skills. He consistently demonstrates his dedication to the Westmont Fire Department by leading various training, drills, and projects. Josh is a valuable asset for any crew. In addition to being a lieutenant with the Westmont Fire Department, he was hired in June of 2007 as a firefighter-paramedic with the Lyle Woodridge Fire Protection District. In April 2015, the Hunter Club of DuPage County awarded Josh the highest award of valor for the rescue of a resident from an apartment fire ahead of a charged hose line. In addition to his responsibilities at two fire departments, he's a husband to Olivia and a proud father to his son Hudson. On behalf of Chief Weiss and all the members of the Westmont Fire Department, we say thank you, and we look forward to your continued growth in your profession.
All right. Come on up, family, before he says it.
Absolutely.
You want your family? We'll get out of there.
That's a much better picture.
Yeah.
You don't have to bend.
Thank you, guys. I'm humbled and honored to receive such an award. I just come to work and do what I think is my job and the right thing to do, but it's nice to be recognized by my peers and coworkers. I'm thinking that I do a great job and provide a great service to everybody, so thank you very much for the recognition of this award.
This time, I'll ask Chief Mulhern if he could come to the podium.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to have Officer Jonathan Longini meet me up here at the podium, please. Mayor, as we would like to ask you to conduct one of the great honors that you have to do, and that is swearing our newest police officer, Jonathan Longini, as a patrolman here in the village of Westmont.
You've got to come in the middle here. If you're going to repeat after me, please raise your right hand, and repeat after me. I, state your name.
I, Jonathan Longini.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The laws of DuPage County.
The laws of DuPage County.
The Westmont Village Code of Ordinances.
Westmont, or Village of Westmont Court Ordinances.
And I will faithfully discharge.
Faithfully discharge.
The duties for the office of police officer.
Duties of, position of police officer.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Glad to have you.
Welcome.
Congratulations. And as Jonathan meets me at the podium, you will notice that he's slightly out of uniform, and at this time, I'd like to introduce, well, why don't you introduce your mom and dad to us all, please?
Nancy Longini.
And if you could folks come forward, and Jonathan has asked that you pin his star on him to make sure that he's full uniform ready when he's going to work. Nice. If you want to take pictures, just get up, you can get up and take them, now's a good time.
If you draw blood, we have a lot of medics in there.
We're covered.
And Jonathan, who else from your family is here with you this evening?
Just my mother and father.
Okay, all right. Well, folks, I would like to thank you for being here, number one. As they say, our children are a direct representation of ourselves, and my contacts with Jonathan, I can say that you've done a fantastic job in raising an outstanding individual. I am very proud to have him as a member of our police department, because I'm sure you're proud to have him here with us. We promise we will do our best to keep him safe. I know when my mother's, including my own, it's a worry, and you just don't tell mom all the bad things, get happy, you just tell her the good things. But we thank you for allowing you to raise such a great child and then bring him here to us to be a police officer in Westmont. Thank you. I would be remiss if I didn't mention some other people and thank some other people. I also would like to thank our Board of, Westmont Board of Fire and Police Commissioners, Chairman Cavanda, who's out of state at this moment, or else he'd be here, Secretary Joseph Horensick, and we have here Commissioner Vince Musial. They have, Jonathan started out in a field of over 100 applicants who took a test, which started with a physical agility and a written test, and then they have to pass an oral interview by the Board, be ranked and screened by our detectives, and it's a very rigorous and thorough job to get an officer standing here next to me tonight. We don't take that duty lightly, that is something that the Board strives and gives their all to, so I'd like to thank the Commission for all their hard work as well. Take that back, Joe is here, the Secretary Horensick is here, so.
So did I remember.
Yeah, we saw him.
With that, as I do with all the officers, I put them on the spot, and I've asked Jonathan
to tell us a little bit about himself.
Thank you, everybody. Just wanted, I started in law enforcement in 2004 as a dispatcher, went through the academy in 2005, worked for the Village of Marinette Park, after that, I went to Amtrak Railroad Police, and then from there, I am here, so I'm looking forward to finishing my career off as a law enforcement officer with the Village of Westmont, and I look forward to serving all the residents in Westmont. And I'd like to thank the Board for giving me this opportunity. Thank you.
I told Jonathan when I met him, I said, I go, while you work for Amtrak, we'll keep you close to home with railroad tracks in town. Mayor, thank you for this opportunity, and to the village board, and on behalf of Chief Weiss, for everyone here, we have cake and coffee in the ante room. Yes, the Fire Department cake is bigger than the Police Department cake, but please just don't read into that, everything is fine. So everyone here, please come and have some cake afterwards.
Thanks, Chief. And Larry, you want to take family pictures out there, so we can make sure we get them for him? Again, congratulations.
Glad to have you.
Just take a minute till we can get everybody out, and we'll resume the meeting.
Couple of minutes recess and.
No recess, just.
That's right, well, we can do that for the ceremony.
I'm afraid he'll get up and.
Thanks, Chief.
And then there were us.
And again, I'd like to congratulate both, and also the 25-year service awards, it's always enjoyable when we can recognize some of our own. So moving on, I got one more item, the 100th Anniversary Committee will have a meeting March 31st at 3:30 here in the conference room. We're trying to meet three times a year, our 100th anniversary is 2021, but we want to start getting ideas and thoughts, and so far, we've got a lot of people interested and committed. So that's all I have, and then I'll, Clerk Simsky.
I have a couple of things. Again, I want to remind everybody that we will have the Public Information Committee meeting March 31st. I believe we're starting at 4:30, I don't see Larry, but I'm saying 4:30. And remind everybody that our annual Westmont Community Awards banquet is Monday, April 25th at 6 o'clock p.m. at the Hilton. Tickets are available at www.westmontchamber.com. And then I want to remark to, we had two great events this week. One of them was, of course, the Mariano's opening, that store is gorgeous, if you haven't been in it, go look, it takes quite a while to look around, because it's huge, but it is a beautiful store. And then on Tuesday, the Chamber had a progressive dinner, that we walked down the downtown area and had wonderful food at Uncle Bubbs, and Vincentori, and Neat, and Fleming's, and you stopped, and it was very nice, because they were actually a nice size, so you weren't stuffed, you were comfortable.
The Uptown?
And we had beer at the Uptown, yes, we had green beer for St. Patrick's Day, to start it all out, and then they paired beer or wine with whatever we had at the other restaurants. They are a lot of fun, and I encourage everyone to come and try one one of these days. And the other thing, I want to wish everybody a happy Easter, because we won't meet again until after Easter, so everybody enjoy, and everybody drive carefully tonight if you're out drinking green beer. So be careful on the roads, don't drink and drive.
That's right. That's all, thank you. Attorney Zemanek?
Nothing to report, other than I will miss the next meeting on March 31st, so yeah, I'll tell my family, Emery from my office will attend.
Thank you. Manager May?
All right, nothing tonight, thank you.
Now, move on to trustees, we'll start on this side, trustee Barker.
Thank you, Mayor. Two things, Westmont First will meet next Monday night at 6:00 p.m. at the library, that is March 21st at 6:00 p.m. And then also, this evening, prior to this meeting, we had a Community Development Committee meeting, and a ongoing discussion at that meeting is residential and commercial permit fees, and I think everybody here that was part of that meeting can agree they're doing a very thorough job. They've been working on this now for several months, and there's a little bit more work to be done, but I want to thank them for all their efforts, and I'm still a little bit, my head is still a little bit spinning from that conversation, but it was a great meeting, and that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Guzzo?
I have several items, Mayor. The first thing, I want to let everyone know, we are having a special finance committee meeting after this meeting, so if everyone would like to attend, please stay. Secondly, we are going to be having our budget workshop, it is scheduled for Thursday, April 7th, 6 o'clock here at Village Hall. I attended the Mariano's Monday night, it is phenomenal, it was great to see everybody, the crowd was wonderful, so get out there and enjoy, it's a wonderful store. Next, I want to also remind everybody, our next official finance committee meeting will be Thursday, April 14th at 4:00 p.m., and the agenda will be forthcoming on that one. Reminder, St. John Council of the Knights of Columbus is still hosting their Friday Night Fish Fry, it's from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., and the address of the hall is 25 North Cass Avenue. And last, but certainly not least, I have the pleasure of awarding Spencer Parker, our finance director, and our finance staff with the following GFOA award. The Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting has been awarded to the Village of Westmont by the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada, GFOA. For its comprehensive annual finance, financial report, CAFR, the certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. An award of financial reporting achievement has been awarded to the individual's department or agency designated by the government as primarily responsible for preparing the award-winning CAFR. This is presented to the Finance Department, Village of Westmont. The CAFR has been judged by an impartial panel to meet the high standards of program, including demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure, to clearly communicate its financial story, and motivate potential users and users groups to read the CAFR. The GFOA is a nonprofit professional association serving approximately 17,500 government finance professionals with offices in Chicago, Illinois, and Washington, D.C., and I have a wonderful plaque I'm going to present to Spencer, and I'd like to say congratulations. For 2014 and 2015, and it's heavy.
Get our photographer. All right.
Larry used tail bacon.
It's marble. It's nice.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Does he have a cake too?
Larry's got cake.
Just a little tiny cup.
Didn't want to spend too much.
Individual one.
Thank you all for your hard work and your department's hard work.
Congratulations. Thank you.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Well, thank you. Trustee Nero?
Thank you, Mayor, just a few things, the next Public Safety Committee meeting will be April 14th, and I want to, next item, I want to congratulate or thank Lynne J. Rowley. This past week, she held a CPR class at the firehouse, and I wasn't there, but a few friends there, and I got nothing but compliments, she did a fantastic job, I heard, and I just want to make sure, keep doing that program, because it really did give a lot of people some good skills, so they're very thankful of it, it's a great service we offer. Next item, we are going to have some more CPR classes, May 24th at 6:30 p.m., and October 25th at 6:30 p.m. You can sign up, there's a form online, check it out on our website, and it goes without saying, I just want to congratulate and welcome Mariano's, what an awesome place, it's great to have it in town, and I can't wait to go there again, so that's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. I'll move it to this side, trustee Barry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'll take up Mr. May's time, since I have a couple of things here today. But our next Public Works meeting that is scheduled is for April 28th, that will be at 4:30 prior to our village board meeting here in the boardroom. And the long-awaited electronics recycling program is back. This is going to be held at Downers Grove Township Highway Department at 318 East Quincy. This is where it was held previously, it's most famously known as being down the street from Bales. It'll be the third Saturday of each month, and it is from 8:00 a.m. to noon, and we would suggest that everyone not wait till the last minute, because they get some heavy-duty lines there. The other change to the program is that there will be a cost for TVs, and that cost will vary from $15 to $60, and then there's a website, or you can contact Larry here at the village to determine, I assume that it's the larger TVs will be more and the smaller TVs will be less, but any questions, you can contact Larry McIntyre here at the village. More good news, that the village has been recently received official notification that the Village of Westmont has once again been received awards as a Tree City USA designation. This is the 20th consecutive year that the village has received this designation, so congratulations to John Yater and the entire public works staff, this is something that John holds very close to his heart, and again, congratulations to them. Along those lines, our brush pickup will begin, our weekly brush pickup program with waste management will resume in April, and the details, again, will be on our website and also in Neighbors Magazine. And lastly, an update on the Environmental Improvement Commission, the next meeting will be April 4th, 6:00 p.m. at the Westmont Public Library. And also, our Arbor Day Essay Contest and Art Contest has wrapped up, and the winners will be announced soon and recognized at the next village board meeting. We had over 20 participants in the contest, and again, at the next board meeting, we'll have hopefully some winners to show you. And then in conclusion of the, in April's Earth Day events, there's a seedling giveaway program. Residents can go to the village website to sign up for free seedlings, which will be available for pickup on Earth Day, April 22nd, and I'm not sure where they'll be available for pickup, but they will be available for pickup.
Out of the village hall.
At the village hall?
Library.
Library, at the library.
Or at the library.
Or at the library. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Little?
Thank you, Mayor, just a couple of items, one, the next meeting for the Administration Committee will be here on May the 12th at 4:30, and then the biggest announcement is that the Village of Westmont has been doing a major media blitz, a social media blitz, and some of the information, informational posts on the village website and the social media include, as trustee Nero mentioned, the Fire Department CPR classes, as trustee Barry mentioned, the new electronics recycling event in Westmont, we also mentioned the COP ON Top program promotion, as well as stormwater management program update from the whole last year, lots of volunteer opportunities and more. You can sign up and connect with the village on Facebook, Twitter, and Google+. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. And we'll conclude with trustee Addington.
A couple of things, economic development, we'll do first, our next meeting is scheduled for April 6th, Jill, do we have an agenda, we do have an agenda?
Yes, I do.
So that'll be 9:00 in the morning, either here or in the boardroom next to me, and again, we seem to have something new to talk about every meeting, so it's open to the public, please come, you find it interesting, and this is where we're going. Last night, I went with the manager to the monthly meeting of the DuPage Mayors and Managers, they had three guest speakers from three other COGS, all talking about things that are going on either at the federal level, the state level, county level, whatever, and in joint, things that are kind of, that all of us have as high priority. The interesting thing is, things are not so bad at the federal level, when the guy got up and wanted to talk about what was going on in the state, he really didn't know what to say, because it's, you know.
Nothing's going on.
Nothing, yeah, that's basically what they said. So, but those go, those keep going. The next, the next chapter in the Sully Report will come after next Tuesday morning, when DuPage Mayors and Managers Legislative Committee meets again, and we'll get to hear all the new things that are going on. There are some new bills that are being presented, the question is whether or not the Speaker is even going to allow them to be put on the floor for discussion. The last thing we heard was that the Speaker was trying to control the agenda in an election year, and if they had any controversy at all, it wasn't even going to be discussed or put on the agenda, that's the last thing we heard. But I'll keep everybody informed on that. Turning to, again, back to economic development, I'll introduce Larry Forsberg, he can talk about a couple of things, one, he can kind of fill everybody in, I think a lot of people have about Mariano's already, we were hoping that Bob Mariano would get here tonight, but he's probably still, he's probably still down the greeting and helping everybody.
Bob is still working the aisles, when I was there earlier in the week, he was walking through the store, nobody really knew who he was, and he was just helping people with questions, finding things. So their general manager, Shane, was hoping he could join us tonight, but he's hoping to catch a couple hours of rest, he's had a baby daughter 18 days ago, so just, you know, we want to get the word out that Mariano's is open, and the store is doing phenomenal, they're going to be open from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. each and every day, seven days a week. They do have a full restaurant service, as we well know now, and a lot of people don't really know about Mariano's, because they're not real common in our area, it's only been a few years. So anything we can do to help get the word out on the store is very helpful, it's a very important part of our Southwestmont Business District redevelopment process, and I believe this store will be driving a lot of traffic in that area for many, many, many years to come, so.
And you have to get down your seat, because again, it's different, it's huge, as everyone has said, you're not done. You're not done.
Oh.
Don't you talk about the, the restaurant voting?
Oh, I will put in a plug. Up until March twenty-seventh, we're voting for our favorite restaurants in Westmont. And if you go to the Westmont Chamber website, there's a banner right on the homepage where you can click, and it will take you to the listing of restaurants by categories, by type of restaurants, your favorite place to have breakfast, your favorite place to have a pizza. And you can vote once a day, up until, including March twenty-seventh. So we will be announcing the winner of those, winners of those categories at the April twenty-fifth Community Awards Center. So stay tuned for more news on that. Thank you.
Now you're done. And then the last thing I have is, is Lions Club business. We have two buses that come into town periodically. One is a hearing screening bus, and the other, for some of us that are longer of tooth, a diabetic retinopathy bus. They will be here from nine until noon on April fourteenth at the Senior Center at Maze Lake Village. But that's open to everyone. It's free. It's only a screening. It is not a testing. It's always important, but anybody who wants to come and have a picture taken of their eyes, or do a hearing test, you're more than welcome. And as I said, it's free of charge, and it's a Lions project. So that's all I have. Sir?
Well, thank you. And I...
April fourteenth. April fourteenth, at Maze Lake.
And I have to thank Trustee Addington for representing the village at the Mayors and Managers. You're the most experienced individual we have, as being the former mayor.
A little bit of a celebrity there, too.
And he's a celebrity, because everybody remembers him. But again, thank you. So moving on, items to be removed from the consent agenda. Does any board member have an item they'd like to have removed from the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, sir.
Trustee Addington.
There's one item that's there, which is a proclamation for C-SPAR.
Yes.
And they are here, so I think we'd like to pull that from the agenda and do that as a separate item.
Okay. Any other? If not, then I ask Manager May to read the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. First on the consent agenda this evening are Village Board Minutes, board to consider approving the minutes of the Village Board meeting held March third, 2016. Next is Finance Ordinance Number Twenty-One, in the amount of one million, five hundred sixty-three thousand, five hundred twenty-six dollars and fifty-three cents. Followed by Purchase Orders. The first purchase order for Cloud Sherpas, eight thousand, two hundred and twenty-one dollars and thirty cents, represents the additional Google licensing for accounts here at the village, and also the upgrade for the cost that we're transitioning to Google Unlimited in the next fiscal year. Second Purchase Order, DuPage Senior Citizens Council, amount of twenty-four thousand dollars. It's our annual contribution. Third, Westmont Chamber of Commerce, sixteen thousand, three hundred and seventy-six dollars, represents the fourth payment for the Economic Development Partnership. Next Purchase Order is for Cummins Power LLC. This is for the repairs to fire truck eighteen thirty-nine or the ladder. These are repairs that were already completed, that you heard at the Public Safety Committee. And with that, the next purchase order for Global Emergency Products is for eighteen thousand dollars for additional but different repairs for the same vehicle that are still needed. When we get, we'll also talk more about that whole larger topic when we get to the Finance Committee later. Next Purchase Order, Don Morris Architect, six thousand, ten dollars, ninety cents for February building and plan review fees. Next Purchase Order is Corp Pro Water Works, thirteen thousand, nine hundred dollars. This is for what's called cathodic protection in the, one of the two ground storage tanks over at the Water Division on Burlington Avenue. Next is Janus Gardens, nine thousand, four hundred and seventy-one dollars. This is a new grower that we're using for the hanging baskets in the Central Business District. Last Purchase Order, Bittero Tree Experts, twenty-five thousand, thirty-five dollars, represents the removal of trees, seventy-one trees specifically, and a hundred and eight stumps. The total of purchase orders is one hundred thirty-seven thousand, ninety-one dollars and fifty-four cents, which brings the total of purchase orders and Finance Ordinance Number Twenty-One to one million, five hundred sixty-three dollars.
No.
No, it's, I didn't add those together.
Add them together, yeah.
Only we had a Finance Director that could do that. It's happened.
It's one million, seven hundred thousand, six eighteen oh seven.
Thank you, sir.
How did it?
Does that conclude the consent?
With that one removal, it does, sir.
Do I have a motion to approve as presented?
Motion by Addington to approve as presented.
Second, Nero. Motion made, and second on the question. Trustee Barrett.
On Purchase Order C, I see that that's a non-budgeted item, and it's an increase of forty-five Google users and upgrade to Google Unlimited.
It's a... It's not budgeted in that amount. We learned that we had to, the Google Unlimited upgrade, you'll see as part of the transition in the next fiscal year, starting May first. But at this time, we're, we have to add accounts for, I'll just, quick version is, for purposes of Open Meetings Act, all our committees and, not just commissions, but the committees and the special committees that are doing village business, we are creating email accounts so that they can communicate accordingly without jeopardizing their personal email address to, you know, village open meetings business. So it's mostly the additions at this time that we're doing now, and then the rest of it will be ongoing every year as we get into, when it gets into Google Unlimited, then it doesn't.
But then covered in next year's budget.
Yes.
Avoiding the Hillary problem.
Maybe the State Department can use some help.
That inspired the, you know, the look into it, so.
Thank you, Mr. May.
Any additional questions? Anybody from the audience? Seeing on roll call, please.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Motion passes. We'll go back to the proclamation. C-SPAR's fortieth anniversary. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion by Addington to approve.
Second, Little.
On the question, seeing on roll call, please.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
And at this time, I'd like to read that proclamation, and it's entitled, "C-SPAR's fortieth anniversary." Whereas C-SPAR, which stands for Southeast Association for Special Parks and Recreation, celebrated its fortieth anniversary on March ninth, 2016. Whereas the Westmont Park District was a charter member of the organization in nineteen seventy-six. Whereas the sole purpose of C-SPAR is to provide dynamic programs and quality recreation services for people with disability, disabilities residing in the twelve community service area. Whereas C-SPAR works with and serves the park districts of Claron Hills, Darian, Downers Grove, La Grange, La Grange Park, Lamont, Lyle, Westmont, and Woodridge, and the villages of Brookfield, Indian Head Park, and Western Springs. Whereas it is C-SPAR's vision to discover abilities, achieve potential, and realize dreams. Whereas C-SPAR was founded with and continue to operate with the following core values: fun, excellence, service, respect, and accountability. Whereas for the past forty years, the mission and activities of C-SPAR have been maintained by its committed and dedicated Board of Directors, staff, and members. And whereas C-SPAR provides recreational programs for people with special needs, who otherwise might be limited in regard to various exercise and social opportunities. Now therefore, I, Ronald J. Gunter, serving as Mayor of the Village of Westmont, as well as being a C-SPAR Board Member for over twenty years, on behalf of the Village Board and our residents, do hereby honor and congratulate C-SPAR on its fortieth anniversary. And again, I signed this, and so it's been passed, and I'd like to call up Susan Friend, who is the Executive Director of C-SPAR, present it to her, and she'll like to tell us a little bit about C-SPAR.
Susan, state your name for the clerk for the record.
I will. I'm Susan Friend. I'm the Executive Director of C-SPAR, and it is an honor to be here tonight. And on behalf of C-SPAR and everyone involved with the organization, thank you for this kind proclamation. We are enjoying celebrating our fortieth year. And as Ron said, Westmont was one of the members that started C-SPAR, the vision to create opportunities for people with disabilities, to have opportunities in the parks and to be a part of the community. Forty years ago, there weren't that many special recreation associations in the state of Illinois, and the state of Illinois is the only state in the country that has special recreation associations. There are only three others in the state at that time, and these communities came together to create something new and something different. They took a leap of faith, went forward, and created opportunities that have continued to grow over a period of forty years. The opportunities that we talk about, I'm going to show pictures, because the individuals that we serve tell their own story very, very well, because they are who we are, they're what we're all about, and our sole purpose for being. Westmont has a lot to offer. Any special rec association would be happy to have them as a member, because Westmont had a park district with a recreation center long before many of its counterparts had one, and some still don't, and some hope to have something one day. The cooperative of five communities that came together, that now has grown to twelve, only increases the opportunities that are available to your residents. What Westmont doesn't have, although it has a golf course and a fitness center and a community center, the Senior Center, and terrific parks, other communities may have something else to offer, with an indoor pool or an outdoor pool and those types of things. The power of the cooperative creates more opportunities for your residents. And I think the community of Westmont is one that embodies the spirit of C-SPAR in so many ways, because it is such a community that is so, so involved and within its own community, as well as reaching out into the other communities. You mentioned the Lions Club and the Knights of Columbus, where we mentioned, those are two of the longest-supporting organizations of C-SPAR, community organizations. And just, just a little over a year ago, the Lions Club came together with the other Lions Clubs and the C-SPAR communities, and bought us a bus with a wheelchair lift to help continue to increase our, our role in the community with our population. And the St. John Council, I believe, is the longest funding community organization in the forty years of C-SPAR. So we, we thank those community members and so many others that made us who we are today. What started with a telephone and a, and a table, in fact, I heard it was a rickety table when talking with the previous, the original director a few weeks ago, we now serve, have over eight hundred programs a year and serve two thousand individuals. And Westmont has usually, anywhere between five and six hundred registrations come from Westmont each year. We, we offer, our Tai Warner Park is the, is the home of the summer kickoff program. IGI Gymnastics and Papa Paceros are two of the community businesses that we use on a regular basis. We have music lessons, our drop-in center for people with mental illness at the community center, and golf at Twin Lakes. So we have a lot of things going on in Westmont, just to name a few. People typically think of C-SPAR, think of people with a very visible disability, whether it would be autism or Down Syndrome, or hearing impairment, or physical disability. We also have programs for people with mental illness. That's something that you can't necessarily see, people who've had strokes. We have programs specifically for those folks. I know your community takes Special Olympics to, takes a great pride in the Special Olympics, and you have a lot of individuals who have been very active. Though your police department recently was recognized for five thousand dollars to Special Olympics, and C-SPAR trains athletes in eighteen Special Olympics sports now. And most recently, our winter sports is Westmont-driven, with William in cross-country skiing and Michael in downhill skiing. You have the fastest cross-country skier in Special Olympics living in Westmont. And no slouch at downhill skiing with Mike either. So you can take great pride in that. In addition to the tax base that we appreciate from the Westmont Park District, C-SPAR does fundraising as well. We'll have an American English concert coming up on May fifth at the Tivoli Theater. Tickets are twenty-five dollars, and will be available in a couple of weeks. So if you want to have a little fun, come over to the Tivoli, enjoy their good popcorn, and raise some bucks for C-SPAR. We'd be happy to, happy to help you do that. But as I said, I think C-SPAR's participants are the story here, and so I want to give a video opportunity. I don't want to take a lot of time with your meeting, but I want to show a portion of, each year, we have a Believe and Achieve banquet, where we recognize our, each and every participant who wants to attend. We have our Athlete of the Year, our Cultural Artist of the Year. We recognize community groups and organizations, and this is something we try to do to encapsulize what all happened during the year. This is the one from this most recent year. And if I just push play, is this going to work? Sure.
We'll see.
All right.
Don't ask me.
We'll go here. Hopefully, that gave you an idea of the diversity of the programs that we serve, the individuals we serve. The last clip was for our older participants, which does make up the largest group, but I think the cross-section was there, and we're proud to be a part of your community and appreciate the support that we've always received in Westmont. Thank you, Ron, for his leadership at C-Spar for many, many years, and for the support we've received in the community. We are truly grateful. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions while Sue's here? Sue's been employed there for probably 35 years or?
Thirty-seven come June 1st.
Like I said, 37 years.
Yeah, I'm trying to follow your footsteps like in Westmont Park District.
Two, three more years. But she's been, and the one thing I have to say about the staff, they are truly dedicated, and they have to have the patience and the willingness to work with each one of those individuals because a lot of that's one-on-one, if not two or three-on-one. So it is such a good organization that we know one of our own here in town was Athlete of the Year, Michelle Foresley.
Absolutely.
And everybody's so proud of her. So again, thank you, Sue. It's a great organization, and I just thought it'd be appropriate to have you come in. So again, congratulations.
We appreciate the opportunity to come in and talk with you and share a little bit more about C-Spar, and again, for the recognition of our 40th anniversary. We're proud to have been around that long, and we're looking forward to more good things in the future. So thanks for being along for the ride.
Moving on the agenda, move on to unfinished business. There is, we do not have any this evening, so I'll move on to new business. A. Increase the number of available massage establishments license by one. Board to consider an ordinance increasing the number of massage establishment license by one and to approve a massage establishment license for Enlightened Hands Wellness and Massage Incorporated. And I'd ask Chief Mulhern to give us some additional information.
Thank you, Mayor. And you'll notice the wardrobe changed since I was outnumbered by the fire department. I'm trying to blend in, so that's why I'm wearing the white shirt. Now, okay. Thank you, Mayor. Background of subject matter, Enlightened Hands Wellness and Massage Incorporated has submitted and completed the application process to operate a massage licensed business in Westmont. All available massage established licenses are currently in use. The number of six is the limit that we have right now, and that's all that's in use. The board is to consider increasing the number of massage establishment licenses to seven from its current level of six to allow the board to issue a massage establishment license to Enlightened Hands Wellness Massage Inc. should have decided to do so. The recommendation is that the board, the applicant has passed the application background process successfully. If I could have Michael Bouvier come up here and join me. He is going to be the sole owner and employee of massage, of the, I'm sorry, Enlightened Hands. I met with Michael earlier this week. He did go through a background investigation by Detective Sergeant Thompson, and he passed that. We found no reason to deny issuing this license to him due to the background check. I met with Michael earlier this week to get a little bit more information. There was a memo of mine, my recommendation to the village manager, was that the board approve this request and approve the license. There is only one issue, and Michael can address that. And one of the topics that the board is, can use to consider whether they should issue or deny such a license is the number of other massage establishment licenses close to the location that Mr. Bouvier is looking at. He's looking at 519 North Cass Avenue, which is the five-story medical-type building just south of Walgreens on the east side of Cass Avenue, just south of Ogden Avenue. It's mostly medically-based businesses in that location. There is another business in there that already has a massage establishment license, and I'll let Michael explain the differences between the two types of massages. He's reached out to his landlord. He has been able to reach out to the actual business owner in there, but he feels that the businesses are different. One also, I guess, positive would be is Michael goes by referrals only, mostly medical referrals for medical personnel or referrals from his other customers. He does not advertise. There'll be no signage advertising such. And as such, we don't think that there would be a conflict with the other business owner. So with that, I will introduce Michael Bouvier, who is the owner and the applicant, and I can answer any questions you may have of me after you hear his presentation. Michael?
Thank you very much for your time. I do appreciate it. I've been in business for over 12 years professionally, and I've had offices. When I first started, I was, started out working at Oakbrook Bracket and Fitness Club. I'm sure you all are familiar with that facility. I also had opened up a business in Crystal Lake and then moved into Hinsdale, which was quite a task to be able to pull off because they didn't even have a village ordinance for standalone massage company. They only had for spas. And I am most definitely not a spa. I think that's one of the big things to do. In the packet that's in front of you is a little bit of bullet pointing. There's also some of the many letters of referral that have been given from various doctors and some of your local residents and such that are clients of mine. One of which is actually the second one in there, Camille Jones. She is actually a doctor who has been talking with me about when her lease expires, also moving her business to join up with me in Westmont. So she'd be moving from Naperville and bringing all her clientele into Westmont as well. So that's something that's a positive, I think. You know, I'm not a stranger to doing what I do. What I do is very different from really every other place that I've seen. I'm very well-versed in multiple different various forms of massage. I went to National University of Health Sciences. That's where I graduated from. I took every course possible during that time. And in the 12 years subsequently, I have developed my own stuff. I am NCTMB-approved to provide CE's for, you know, other massage therapists. So I have programs in place that have been approved for that. I'm also nationally board-certified as well, you know, to be able to go and offer my services other places. Essentially, what I offer besides just massage, it's not, I don't do, people don't come to me traditionally for relaxing what I call a foo-foo massage, right? People find me because they need to be fixed. They have an issue. A lot of these letters that are in here would reflect on some of the work that I've done. Essentially, it is all based on word of mouth. I do have a Yelp listing, but that's it. I've had that since I moved into Hinsdale. I don't pay for it. It's just one of those ways for people to find me. But as a result, I literally, from day one, I started out with one client that my teacher gave to me and felt that I would be of better service for that person, and it just trickled into what I have now, which is quite a lot of people. I put on seminars throughout the year. I have a standing option in Oakbrook at the Hyatt Lodge that I tend to use their space to do events. I have done at the Weston. I did an event there recently, two years ago. In any event, what I bring to the community is all the people that have followed me from all the various surrounding towns. And when people come to events or trainings that I do, that opens up more opportunity to the town for them to, you know, go and frequent places of food. When I do weekend events, you know, like the one that I have coming up in August, that opens up opportunity for hotel stays because I have people that fly in from Florida and California and other places like that as well. I've chosen Westmont as a place for me to kind of settle in my roots because it really is a meeting point for me. You know, it's like an intersection point between the clients that I have in Downers Grove and the clients I have in Hinsdale and Glen Ellen and Lombard and Westmont and, you know, all these different areas. It gives kind of a neutral point because some people from Hinsdale, it's a little bit of a further drive to come to Downers Grove. Well, now I'd be centralized. And so that's kind of my goal with that. Again, you know, I don't, I don't allow for walk-ins ever. I've always prescreened everybody who comes in. I'm not, I'm not, I have an aversion to some of these companies that have come out there representing themselves in a certain way and then, and then offer services that go against what I've been trained in, you know. I'm a state-licensed professional, you know, and we are consistently striving towards getting that acknowledgement as a medical professional. And again, in these letters that you'll see, I've had lots of doctors that also agree with the level of service that I provide being that. And I'm real passionate about food. I teach qigong. I do, I coach soccer for the park district in Downers Grove. I actually was looking into, if I move into this town, I'll see if I can offer through the village qigong classes, you know, for adults and for children through the park district would be one of my goals. Yeah.
Just a question my board have.
I entertain a motion.
So move, Addington.
Second, Nero.
Motion made in second to approve as presented. On the question.
I'll just point out that the applicant has not yet, as I understand, signed the lease for the premises, but will do so upon your approval. Then the space, I believe, has to be inspected to make sure it's in conformity with the ordinance, with the massage licensing ordinance. So the approval ordinance tonight does make it subject to the lease being signed and the premises checking out.
Okay. And I have to compliment Chief and his staff for the work you did to present to us, and it sounds kind of exciting to have a business.
I have some questions.
Yeah, go ahead.
Michael, thank you for considering Westmont. But I noticed, looking through some of these letters, it looks like that they were geared to Downers Grove and Hinsdale. Was, were you trying to get in those communities, and was there a reason that you came to Westmont instead of those?
No, no, I've actually, I'm actually approved in Hinsdale and was there for several years, and then I moved to Downers Grove. Some of these letters were written from previous. Some of them are newer. They're all, they're all part of this. I chose Westmont not from being denied anywhere else simply because it's a neutral location for me to move.
And you're currently on Belmont and Downers? Is that where you're currently at?
Correct. And I just bought a house right at the border of Westmont on 55th Street, and so commuting-wise, where I'm looking is also a factor as well, so.
Perfect. Thank you.
Can you go into a little bit about the differences between your business and the other one that's in the same building?
Yeah, yes, actually. So I had contacted them preemptively to find out really what they offered because I couldn't find anything on them. And through a brief phone call, they do acupuncture, which I am not an acupuncturist. I'm a Chinese-Tonic herbalist, but totally two different things. And they do tui na, which is where their massage license is from. So tui na is kind of like acupressure with like an energetic component, you know, and very different than Western massage therapy essentially. You know, it's very Eastern philosophy. I appreciate it. In fact, actually, they can complement each other because someone can come in for rehabilitative, reconstructive-type stuff that I do. Because when I work on somebody, I'm working on dealing with proper mobilization, getting them, and then I spend time teaching them about stretching techniques, better ways to increase their health, lessen their inflammation responses and things like this. So it's two totally different abilities and functions is how we do, in which case they're complementary. Because there is a timeframe for acupuncture and acupressure, which is not what I do, so.
Good. And then one, just one more question. Of the other six, or the six that we have, the other five, are any of them in the same category as this gentleman?
I didn't look into the other category, but I looked into geographic location. You should have gotten a chart. The closest, next closest one is Tranquil Passage, I believe, in the 3900 block of North Cass Avenue, which is just south of 39th Street. The next would be Garbo, or not Garbo, the Hair Salon at Burlington and Cass. However, it's a different type of massage service than what Michael would be offering, not conflicting that way. So that would be the other closest one, and again, different. Michael was looking at 63rd and Fairview, but would feel that Ogden Avenue would better suit his service purposes. One thing that he mentioned, which impressed me, is that these classes he's talking about in Oakbrook, he believes there's sweet space at 519 that would allow him to no longer have those classes in Oakbrook and have them here in Westmont. So he's bringing even more people to town and spend more time in town.
Very good.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Anybody from the audience? Seeing none, roll call, please. Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you. I appreciate this. And once we get the grand opening going, I would love to, if you guys could come in and see what we, see what I do. I mean, it's really something.
Got the gentleman in the back row there, Larry.
Oh, see Larry, he would love to talk to you.
Just had a big smile on his face. Thank you. Moving on, new business B. A resolution of intent motor fuel tax GO bond. This is revised. Board to consider a revised resolution approving the IDOT resolution for the village's 2016 motor fuel tax resurfacing project. And I have Public Works Director Ramsey give us some more information.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Staff's requesting to appropriate the sum of $500,000 for the 2016 MFT resurfacing project for the municipality's allotment of MFT funds. And if you remember back in, on February 4, the village approved the resolution of the amount of $3 million. This is a revised resolution to reflect only the additional MFT funding over and above the balance of $2.5 million, which is the balance of the original $8.5 million bond.
They didn't want us to, they didn't like the aggregate resolution that we did, so per their request.
This is per their request. Do I have a motion?
So move, Barry.
Second, Guzzo.
Motion made in second. On the question. Anybody seeing none, roll?
Why not?
Oh, go ahead, trustee Barry.
Mike, I know our Public Works meeting was cut a little short last time, but were we going to get a schedule that the residents could have access to? I know that that comes up quite a bit as far as, is my road getting done this year and when and so forth. So is that something that we plan on doing?
Right. We didn't want to be premature on that. We wanted to make sure we got the approval from MFT, from IDOT first. And we have the list, and we've already, we just went out to bid on Tuesday, what day was it, Tuesday? And next board meeting, you'll see the award, we're going to award the contract to, if it's board-approved. And after that, we will have a list. And that does go on our website, so all residents can go to the website and see what streets are going to be done.
Very good. Additional questions? Roll call, please. Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
A motion passes. New business C. Purchase of real estate. Board to consider an ordinance approving a real estate contract for the purchase of 102 East Chicago Avenue by the village. Manager may.
Mayor, the village has negotiated a real estate contract to purchase 102 East Chicago Avenue, and this is one component of our initiating our stormwater management program. So if you can, 102 East Chicago is at the corner of Warwick, Chicago and Naperville in that triangle. And as a note of interest, this is, it's one address, but it's actually two parcels. So it's the parcel that the building is on, and then there's a little triangular outlot out in the middle of that, what used to be surrounded by three public right-of-ways. So that's all included, and then we can work towards that improvement in there as well.
Do I have a motion? So move, Guzzo?
Second, Addington.
Motion made in second to approve the purchase. On the question. Trustee Addington.
What did we ever do with the, when they, when they took that part of Naperville Road away that was running along that triangle? Did we vacate that?
No, it's, it is still public right-of-way.
Still public right-of-way. We just took everything out.
Grassy. You see, the public sidewalk still goes through there.
Yeah. Yeah.
And the little triangular parcel I was referring to is what's left in the middle of all that. So that will be all public-owned after this action.
So we never, so this isn't included in that? That's already ours?
It's already.
Yeah, okay, good. Thank you.
Trustee, Trustee Barker.
Yeah. Has the soil testing been done?
No, and thank you, because I wanted to bring up before you were done, as part of the, there's, there's two soil testing that we're interested in. One, that you would do with any constructive, you know, engineering improvement. And secondly, as part of the sale and part of the, the, what's it called? Attorney modifications, the due diligence that we have. Even when you approve this contract, we have, I think it's 60 days to investigate all this. And I have a proposal from our, the engineer that was hired to do the engineering design to do the soil investigation in there as well. Now, that proposal's in two parts. It's the one that we've already hired him to do the engineering, but to add the environmental investigation that this, our proceeding with this contract would be subject to, is an additional $5,650 that is just above my spending authority without bringing it back to you. But being that time is of an essence to get this investigation done, unless there was objection, I'm going to authorize that work to be done and you will see that purchase order on the next, on the next meeting.
Additional, Trustee Barry.
I know our long-term goal for this is retention and stormwater retention, but I can't help to think that maybe this would be a good area for our service wall that we've often talked about for our service clubs and different things on this designated triangle. I was out at the area and wondered if sometimes, you know, long-term, that something like that wouldn't work out there. So I'd just like to throw that out at this point.
Well, it's a good idea. And there's, there's three aspects here, not just the storage of stormwater on the parcel with whatever type of detention or retention, if you will, on the parcel, but we're also needed to do a storm sewer improvement underneath Chicago Avenue. So part of the key of this parcel is being able to have a pit on either side so that we can access a much larger diameter storm sewer that is, it's, it's still north Warwick, but it's south of Chicago Avenue and then going to the south. So that's what we're looking to access.
And I think like a lot of these purchases that we've had, not only are we improving the storm water, but we're taking away something of an eyesort to the village and making improvement. So to me, there's a lot of positives that come out of these purchases.
Absolutely. And I like that idea with the service clubs. Any additional questions? Anybody in the audience? Roll call, please.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes. Motion passes. New business D. IMRF benefit protection leave. Board to consider an ordinance to approve IMRF benefit protection leave for two specific employees. HR Director Crane.
Thank you, Mayor. IMRF benefit protection leave protects from loss of service credit during approved leaves of absences when no wages are being paid, which results in a gap in IMRF contributions. There are two employees whose benefit protection you are considering tonight. The cost, the employer cost for employee A is $227.33. The estimated employer cost for employee B is $821.41. And the total cost is $1,048.74. This is not specifically itemized in the budget, but the funds are available. Had the employees worked, the contributions would have been paid anyway. Are there any questions?
I think the key is it's after their benefits, pay benefits are gone. They need to continue to get those monthly credits on IMRF and that's what you're, we're looking at to prove. Once somebody runs out of money when they're on a leave, that's when this would kick in.
Correct. So, so for example, if someone is on an unpaid leave, so if FMLA, they use up all their paid leave first and then they're using unpaid FMLA time. During that time, they would...
No service credit?
No service credit.
Do we have to do this every time? Is this an individual motion or ordinance for these two individuals? If this happens again, do we need to do it specifically or has it now been approved?
Kathy and I discussed that and think it's best done on a case-by-case basis.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Motion by Addington to approve.
Second, Little.
Motion been made in second to approve. Additional questions? Comments? Roll call, please.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes. Motion passes. New business E. Charitable solicitation amendments. Board to consider an ordinance approving amendments to Chapter 22, Article 4, Division 4 of the Westmont Code or ordinances regarding charitable solicitations. And I'd ask Manager May to give us more detail.
This item, this proposed amendment is simply authority to allow the village clerk or the village clerk's office to review and issue these permits for charitable solicitations and removing the whole cycle of having to bring each person back before the village board as the code is written now. So the clerk's office through the deputy clerk and Alicia's supportive of this amendment as well, could just process them, you know, same day or more expediently and efficiently than the way it's set up now.
It's streamlined.
Yes.
And as we know, the criteria is defined by state statute, so it's that they're a properly organized charity, like a 501(c)(3) corporation and that it's a state fundraising drive, a statewide fundraising drive that provides certificate of insurance, named the village as an additional insured. So she kind of goes through, check the boxes. If they meet that criteria, boom, they get their license. Lot faster, more efficient for the applicant.
And again, the applicant can still appear on your open forum and announce their charitable event, but this way...
Similarly, if it's not a routine matter, if there was a compound request like a waiver of some sort, they, that would bring it back here automatically.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Motion by Addington to approve.
Second, Nero. Motion made in second. Additional comments? Questions? Anybody in the audience? Roll call, please.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes. Motion passes. New business F. Declare items as surplus property. Board to consider an ordinance to declare fire department engine 1822 equipment and tools as surplus equipment. Chief Flash.
Thanks, Mayor. The property as identified in your attachments that you have has outlived its useful life and is outdated and unfunctioning or is otherwise not economically maintainable. Equipment, materials will be sold, donated or scrapped as appropriated. This property upon being declared surplus and disposed of will be removed from the village's property inventory. And that's a 1999 Pierce engine that our new engine just replaced.
Do I have a motion?
Motion by Addington to approve.
Second by Little.
Motion made in second. On the question. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Motion passes. We'll move on to miscellaneous. Does any board member, or did I miss a staff? Anybody has any miscellaneous?
I got one quick thing, Mayor.
Yes.
I just wanted to wish Mike Ramsey and his team good luck next week at WaterCon. The Westmont Crankers are going to be competing, so hopefully they can bring back a win this year.
There you go. Cuttle screen to E.
Depends who you ask. That's all.
And I do have a couple, one thing. First of all, our human relations director is, has a birthday tomorrow, so I want to wish her a happy birthday.
Happy birthday, yeah.
Happy birthday. Should say happy birthday, Grandma.
Grandma, that's right.
And secondly, our distinguished and wonderful attorney will have one while he's gone and not here at a meeting. He will have one right after that. So we won't see John around his birthday till after his birthday, but I'm sure I'll make a carrot cake for him when he returns.
Jenny, you could bring a cake anyways.
Yeah, we could eat in his absence.
I can't leave him out.
Save him a piece.
Those who have not experienced Jenny's carrot cake, you're missing out a lot. So any other miscellaneous? Seeing none, I'd, we do not have an executive session, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move, Little.
Second, Addington.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes. Thank everybody for coming. We'll take about a five-minute, after this meeting, we'll go to a, a committee meeting. So thank you. This meeting's adjourned.